I call, I call the 2,419th meeting of the Milwaukee City Council to order. It's an extraordinary time right now in our country and we are, because of that, diverting a little bit from our usual script. We have a joint statement that we'd all like to read and I'll turn it over to Councilor Stavanger to start us off.
Thank you, Mayor. Residents of Milwaukee, we come before you today as a united city council to address the alarming first step taken by the federal administration. In just the past week, executive orders and directives have been issued that will have lasting consequences on our democracy, our communities, and the values we hold dear. These actions, many of which take direct aim at immigrants, environmental protections, diversity, and even birthright citizenship, are not just policy shifts. They are direct challenges to the fundamental rights and freedoms that define us as Americans.
From immigration and healthcare to climate action and LGBTQ rights, we are seeing sweeping changes that will hurt our community. Orders have been signed to eliminate federal diversity programs, redefine gender protections, increase restrictions on asylum seekers, and open new lands to oil drilling, many of which will be met with legal challenge, but not before they create uncertainty, fear, and harm. We know that these decisions are unsettling, particularly for those who have felt vulnerable in recent years.
We want our community to hear from us loud and clear. Milwaukee will not be swayed by chaos or fear. We see you, we support you, and we will continue to stand up for justice, inclusion, and dignity for all. We will not allow divisive federal policies to undo the progress we have made locally, nor will we allow them to erode the strength of our community.
Local government is where real change happens and it is our responsibility to make Milwaukee a place of fairness and opportunity. While we cannot stop these orders from being issued, it is the policy of the City of Milwaukee and Oregon state law that employees and police officers are prohibited from participating directly or indirectly in immigration-related enforcement. Tonight, we reaffirm our commitment to supporting the rights of our residents and ensuring that Milwaukee remains a welcoming and safe city for all people, regardless of their background, immigration status, gender, race, or beliefs.
Now is the time to stand together. We encourage all residents to stay engaged, support your neighbors, and hold those in power accountable. We will continue to work toward a better future for Milwaukee, one built on unity, compassion, and resilience. No executive order will change our core values, and no act of division will shake our commitment to this community. This is our home, these are our values, and together we will stand firm in the face of uncertainty, ensuring that Milwaukee remains a place of hope, opportunity, and strength. So I'd like to thank all the councilors for joining in this statement, and particularly to Councilor Stavanger for being our scribe and drafter and taking in all the comments that led to the final statement that everyone contributed to, so, thank you. All right, with that, I'll go back to the mundane city script. This meeting is being held in person at City Hall and by video conference. The public may participate in this meeting by coming to City Hall or joining the Zoom webinar. The meeting is being broadcast live on the city's YouTube channel and Comcast Cable Channel 30 within city limits. There will be opportunities for the public to speak during this meeting. If you would like to address council, you may come to City Hall or participate via Zoom. If you are interested in speaking, please let staff know by filling out a yellow comment card for those at City Hall or emailing ocr@milwaukeeoregon.gov for those on Zoom. When it is time to take public comments, staff will monitor the comment cards, email inbox, and Zoom participant list and chat. We will take comments in the order they are received and seen. Comments may also be emailed to ocr@milwaukeeoregon.gov. We ask that all Zoom participants who intend to speak label their Zoom username to show their first and last names for the record. Spanish translation services are available upon request. The public is asked to request translation and other meeting accessibility services at least 48 hours before the meeting. For more information, contact the city recorder at 503-786-7502. Servicios de traducción en español está disponible cuando se ha solicitado. Se pide al público que solicite servicios de traducción y otros servicios de accesibilidad por lo menos 48 horas antes de la reunión. Para obtener más información, llama a el secretario de la ciudad a 503-786-7502. Translation services are also available in other languages. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The City of Milwaukee respectfully acknowledges that our community is located on the ancestral homeland of the Clackamas people. In 1855, the surviving members of the Clackamas signed the Willamette Valley Treaty, also known as the Kalapuyia, etc. Treaty, with the federal government in good faith. We offer our respect and gratitude to the indigenous people of this land. And then we have our announcements. We've got quite a list today. The city continues to seek nominations for the 2024 Volunteer of the Year. Nominations can include anyone who resides in Milwaukee or is a member of a nonprofit organization or business that serves the Milwaukee community. Nominations will be accepted until February 12th. Learn more and submit nominations on EngageMilwaukee at engage.milwaukeeoregon.gov. The city's annual board and committee recruitment kicked off on February 1st. Participate in the city's work and get involved in your community by applying to serve on a board or committee. From the Arts Committee to the Tree Board, there are many interest areas, projects, and programs to get involved with through the volunteer boards and committees. Applications will be accepted until April 1st. To learn more about each committee and apply, use the online form at onboard.milwaukeeoregon.gov. Join the Wetlands Conservancy and the Milwaukee Parks Foundation to help maintain trails, clear weeds, and mulch plants at Minthorne Springs this Saturday from 9:30 a.m. to noon. Tools, gloves, and snacks are provided. The Synthesizer Petting Zoo with the Synth Library of Portland will be at the Leitting Library on Saturday, February 15th from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. Experiment and play with a variety of electronic musical instruments and learn how synthesizers make and shape sound. All ages and abilities are welcome. Learn how to save lives at free naloxone training on Thursday, February 20th from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at the Leitting Library. Participants will learn about the overdose crisis, risk factors, signs and symptoms of an overdose, and how to reverse an overdose to save lives. Registration is required. I'm really, this one I'm particularly happy to see get scheduled. I've kind of been asking for this for a couple of years and I've been carrying naloxone around for a couple of years and worried that I wouldn't know how to do it correctly, so I will be at that training. Volunteer at Kellogg Creek Stewardship Day on Saturday, February 22nd from 9:00 a.m. to noon at the Milwaukee Presbyterian Church Sanctuary. Volunteers will first gather inside for breakfast treats, coffee, and hot chocolate to learn about the Kellogg Creek Restoration and Community Enhancement Project, also known as the Dam Removal Project, before heading outside to remove invasive plants. Save the date for the grand opening celebrations for Milwaukee's three new parks on Saturday, March 8th. The Balfour Park Celebration will begin at 12 and end at 2:00. The Bowman Bray Park Celebration will begin at 12:30 and end at 2:30. And the Scott Park Celebration will begin at 1:30 and end at 3:30. More details to come as the events are planned, so be sure to check the city website as we get closer to March 8th. For more information about each of these events and others, please visit the city's homepage at www.milwaukeeoregon.gov or call 503-786-7555. And haiku, I actually have two haiku today. Oh, oh, I forgot about the parks. Bowman Bray Park opened yesterday, I guess. So it is now open, there's some photos there of the new park. I had been over to have a look at it when the big rubber pieces of flooring were halfway installed, so I'm looking forward to going back over and seeing it now that the fences are down and everyone get out and enjoy Bowman Bray Park. Haiku, so after almost running out of haiku, an audience member here has single-handedly generated a lot of new haiku and we, I'm going to read one here that's from Ms. Fuson at Milwaukee High School. She and her class have submitted a number of haiku that you will see over the next couple of months. So here's Ms. Fuson's haiku. "Stately flag ripples above the green football field. Students swirl in late." And then I have a second haiku, which was written by a guy I know personally who doesn't live here anymore, but he used to live in Milwaukee, and it seemed like a great, a great haiku to read today, the same day that we had the statement we just made. So, "Take my hand, neighbor, let us help one another. Together we thrive." Okay, so with that, we get to community comments. This is the part of the agenda during which council will hear community member comments regarding city business that is not already on the agenda. Before we begin, is there follow-up? Before I ask this question, it looks like there's some yellow cards, so please get those to Scott. Before we begin, is there some follow-up from the January 21st comments with Saber?
There is not, Mayor. There were no audience or community comments for that meeting.
Okay, thank you. For those in person who wish to speak, please submit a yellow comment card, one of these found on the table just inside the chamber's door. If you are on Zoom, please use the raise hand reaction to alert staff that you wish to speak, and when instructed to begin, click the microphone option to unmute yourself. If you are calling in through Zoom and would like to make a comment, dial *9 to raise your hand. You may also submit a comment via email to ocr@milwaukeeoregon.gov. Before you make your comments, please state your name and city of residence for the record. If you would like the city to follow up with you, please submit your contact information to ocr@milwaukeeoregon.gov. As council has other business items on the agenda, well, we're not going to limit people to three minutes each. We often do, because we have a crowded agenda, but I'm not going to impose that limit today. Because information provided during community comments may be new, this is not the time for discussion, but the city manager will respond at the next council meeting to those comments that require follow-up. So I only have one comment card, and that is from Gabriela Santoyo Gutierrez? Okay, and Roberto Ariola from our Equity Steering Committee. So please push the button so that you get the red light.
Good evening, council. Want to start this? Thanks for the introduction. My name is Gabriela Santoyo Gutierrez. I'm the city's Equity and Inclusion Coordinator. I currently do not reside in Milwaukee, though I wish to and one day I will. But today, I have the honor of serving as the committee liaison to our Equity Steering Committee. In a second, LLL, Roberto introduces themselves, but I want to give a quick background for those who don't know the ESC. It is a committee first created in 2021 that is comprised of up to 10 community members of diverse backgrounds working to help reduce inequities in city services. They lend their subject matter expertise and advise city staff on equity, justice, and inclusion actions. Some of them may have joined online, and others provided their written statements for me to read. So for the first public statement I'd like to read, it's by Shayna Justice, who is an ESC member and Milwaukee resident. She states, "I'm new to the Equity Steering Committee, and I can already see how important this committee is to the community. I've lived in Milwaukee for years, but being part of this committee, seeing the diversity of it and the work the city is doing, has made me feel a deeper connection to the community. It's important that diversity and equity continue to be prioritized and that the community sees the work the city is doing. Especially now, when I think a lot of people are feeling alone and abandoned, it's critical to keeping the faith of the community going." The second public comment is by Liz Dart, also an ESC member, Milwaukee resident, and Milwaukee business owner. Equity, inclusion, diversity, and justice have become a highly politicized issue when at its core, it's about people. It's about how we treat each other and how we care about the well-being of others. Equity programs and policies have gone far beyond to ensure that so many people have access to systems and services they haven't had before. As the saying goes, "A rising tide lifts all boats." That is what equitable systems do. They make sure everyone gets what they need to thrive in a community. As someone who lives and works in Milwaukee, as well as being an Equity Steering Committee member, my hope is that our city council will reaffirm Milwaukee's commitment to being an equitable and welcoming community. Thank you. And now a transition to Roberto to introduce himself.
Buenas noches, good night, or no, good evening. I literally translated that. My name is Roberto Ariola Moreno. Mayor, thank you and city council for allowing me to speak today. I join here Gabriela Sentiments and other members from the Equity Steering Committee to encourage the city council and City of Milwaukee to reaffirm their positions and their values to this community, in particular for the residents here who are undocumented, just like myself, who's a dreamer, to LGBTQ communities. We're all impacted by these policies that are enacted by the current administration. And, well, just to say that I acknowledge the work that has been done by the Equity Steering Committee and just really encourage for more participation from the community for this, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. I don't know if councilors have, I mean, we don't usually respond now, but it's not really, I mean, I think we made our statement before and I guess we can talk about it more when we get to the goals, but is anybody feeling?
I'm just curious to know what the overall feeling is, what the Equity Steering Committee, how are they feeling about everything?
Thank you. We had, in our last meeting, we had pretty extensive conversation about this topic and what City of Milwaukee can do. We took extensive look into some of the messages that the City of Milwaukee can do to reaffirm their values towards targeted communities by certain policies, many of which I think Gabriela has already mentioned, I think, and previous actually messages to YouTube and coordination with the city police.
And I'll just add my gratitude for you both for being here, for our Equity Steering Committee members who wrote in. I had the pleasure of being at that meeting last week when we had that robust discussion and what I think is really beautiful is we had that conversation and we were, the group consensus was, we need to come to council to testify to say, you know, please reaffirm your commitment to these values, please make a statement for our community. And you did that without them even having to ask. You know, you wrote your joint statement, I think, not knowing that was going to happen, but it just, I think, you know, both of these bodies continuing to be that voice to the community that this still matters and on this night when you will be setting new goals, I think that doesn't mean that our old goals go away. They become embedded values in our organization and how we carry the work forward, and that's exactly how I think the Equity Steering Committee sees its role and what they were focused on when they met last week. And it was one of our biggest turnouts in months, which was awesome. So I think they're very energized and committed to keeping the fight and the work going forward.
Great, well, thank you so much and thanks to the ones, if there are ones online who joined us, or the ones who offered their testimony, we appreciate that. Thank you. Mr. Stauffer, is there anyone online who's wanting to testify further?
There's no one on Zoom, Mayor Beatty.
Okay, all right. Well, then we will move on to the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda includes minutes of the city council December 17th, 2024 regular session, January 7th, 2025 work session, January 7th, 2025 regular session, and January 7th, 2025 goal-setting town hall. A resolution acting as the local contract review board amending the lease agreement for the cell phone tower at the city's Public Works campus. A resolution granting an exemption from property taxes under Oregon Revised Statute 307.540 to 307. to 307.548 for any qualifying nonprofit low-income housing project within city limits. A resolution acting as the local contract review board authorizing an increase in the project and authorization for the Stanley Reservoir Improvements Project. An Oregon Liquor and Cannabis Commission, OLCC, application for Keeper Coffee, 10722 Northeast Main Street, new license. An OLCC application for Frame Brewing Company, 10722 Southeast Main Street, new license. And an OLCC, a second OLCC application for Frame Brewing Company, 10722 Southeast Main Street, new license, second location. Does any council member wish to remove a consent agenda item? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard? The consent agenda is, is approved. Adoption of council goals. So before I turn it over to Emma to, to introduce our council goals, I want to say that we've spent a lot of time together in this last several days. But I felt like it was really productive and, and it was, you know, it was a great session as, as Counselor Massey called out in closing. It went a lot more smoothly and seemed a lot more satisfying than, than the session two years ago. So I think we have a great set of goals. I want to thank all the councilors for really bringing their full attention to goal setting. I want to thank the community members that weighed in, whether that was on Engage Milwaukee or coming to our open house, or those who responded to the city's general survey. And I mostly, and I want to thank the, the directors around the city who, who really helped fill in gaps for us and provide us with necessary background. But mostly I want to thank Emma, who proved herself, I mean, I first met Emma when she was a facilitator for, and a contractor for the city on, on other projects. So I knew she was a great facilitator, but she proved it again this, this weekend with getting us through our council goals. So I really want to express my appreciation to her. And with that, I will turn it over to her to present.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. And apologies for my hoarse voice. It's tis the season, but I'm here just to give a bit of a recap of how we got to tonight's adoption of city council goals for 2025 to 2027. And then a reveal what the three goals this council prioritized at our last, at our weekend retreat, how, what those came out as. So if you are just tuning in now and are thinking to yourself, what the heck is goal setting? What are we talking about? I'll briefly cover what are council goals and why we choose to set them in the city of Milwaukee. Our council selects goals to really articulate policy priorities for, for a set period of time. Traditionally, we've set goals for about two to three years. The goals we'll be adopting tonight will be for the next three years. And that articulation of policy priorities helps the city focus resources. And by that I mean financial budget, staff time, but also the time of the five individuals you see on the dais, where they're going to spend their attention and really focus their advocacy efforts. It's important to note that goals are not everything we care about and definitely not everything we do as a city. We continue to deliver high-quality core services across all of our departments. And we're also advancing policies that previous councils and this council have already adopted and will continue to do that. When council met a few months ago to kick off the goal-setting process, they set some parameters for this goal-setting period. They decided they wanted to adopt no more than three goals. They really wanted these goals to be action and deliverable focused. Previous goals had been a bit more broad and a bit more nebulous, and they wanted these ones to really be clear of what we were going to try to accomplish in the three years that we were working under these goals. And the reason they are three-year goals instead of two years is we're trying to better align our goal timeline with our budget development calendar. So these goals are going to carry us through the next biennial budget, which will be set middle of next year. And then we will set new goals in early 2028 before we adopt the following biennial budget. The mayor alluded to this a bit in her introduction, but the road to get to these goals tonight, we really tried to make this a transparent and inclusive and collaborative process with the community. Back in November, right after the election and right after two of our councilors were reseated and won their seats, we held a mini-retreat and kicked off the goal development process. That generated 10 ideas that the council wanted to explore further. They did that over about a month period. We did a survey on Engage Milwaukee, which had about 241 responses. And we also held an in-person town hall in January after the holidays. And then again, as the mayor said, we spent lots of quality time together, locked in Chapel Theater, last Friday and Saturday, holding a retreat to finalize those goals. There's a little picture of us hard at work over the weekend, working on these goals. At that retreat, we really reviewed and chewed on all that community feedback. We also looked a little further back to our most recent community survey to, to pull out some data from that. We discussed the context that we're working within. That includes our current financial situation, all the other work we have ongoing and currently programmed at the city. And we also talked about trade-offs. When you set goals, it means you can do anything, but you can't do everything. And you have to talk about what you might have to give up or postpone if you're taking on, or prioritizing new goal work. And we prioritized and selected the top three. We also talked a little bit about the actions we want to do under these goals and how we're going to hold ourselves accountable, how we're going to measure success. And there's going to be a lot more of that work to come throughout year one. So drumroll, please. What were the three goals? The first is economic development. And each of the goals kind of has a bolded header and then sort of a descriptive subheader saying what we really mean by that. So economic development, we want to support Milwaukee's business districts and invest in our neighborhood hubs. The second goal is parks and green space. We want to deliver Milwaukee Bay Park and expand equitable access to green space, including the future restored Kellogg Creek Natural Area. And the third one is affordability. We want to identify opportunities to provide utility relief and support more income-restricted housing in Milwaukee. If you are a council nerd and know how to find our packet online, you can find three draft action plans that are sort of tables that show specific actions we started talking about taking in each of the three years of these goals on the council side and the staff side. Those are draft. They're going to continue to be refined over this year as we bring these goals to life. But that gives you a little bit more of a, of a flavor of specifically what this group wants to accomplish. Looking forward, we're going to, starting in April, have one goal on a work session per month, so council can really sink their teeth in and make progress on those action plans. We'll give updates on what's going on on the staff and the council side, and we'll, in those work sessions, get direction on what the next quarter should, should have in store. I mentioned this already, we're going to spend year one really refining our action plans and our performance measurement and make sure that's all transparently communicated so that you know where, what we're doing and can hold us accountable. I said this earlier on in the meeting, but you know, equity and climate were two goals we previously had. While those are no longer council goals, they are absolutely city values, and they are lenses through which we're going to look at all the work we do as we move these three goals forward. And we really are committed in this goal-setting process to, to making this something that you all in the community can, can be in dialogue with us about. We're going to, want to share updates about goal work on the web, through the pilot, and more. If you have ideas of ways we can better be telling the story about these goals or, or keeping you in the loop, I know myself and my staff would love to know. So please, please get in touch. And then I just want to end here. So after night one of the retreat, we, we did have a, a team dinner at Papa Hayden's, which is not in Milwaukee, unfortunately. It's in Selwood, but it's on Milwaukee Boulevard. And the Yukon Tavern has the sign, and it says, stop here, Milwaukee, i.e. the street just goes to Milwaukee. And we all thought, you would be so lucky to be in Milwaukee and had to take a picture. Counselor Cosner Badi had already left, so if you think his face looks a little weird, it's because I photoshopped him in. But there we are. I think there's great things ahead with this wonderful team. And with that, I will turn it back over to council.
All right. Councilors have things they want to say about the goals?
Well, I'll say that I really appreciated going through this process. This is the second time for me, but I think this one had extra meaning because we didn't just have the responsibility of moving forward existing goals toward their, like, fruition and, and being codified within the city. But this is a, you know, was our chance to really express our priorities around some of the work that we've been able to partake in. And I'm excited to see the next steps. Excited to work with you all on these priorities and really appreciate the leadership that, that every single one of you showed in our retreat. And very much appreciate all of the staff and leaders within the city that showed up in the evening and on the weekend and at 100% to, to move us forward to this point. So thank you. Let's get to work.
Counselor Savage pretty much said it best. It was, you know, I would, I'd be lying if I sat here and said it was grueling and it was, it was pretty good because we all, you know, we, we all actually came in with, with Milwaukee residents and, and doing what's right by them on mind. And, and I, I really appreciate that from each and every one of you, your commitment not only to the residents, but to the staff and the city here and not putting us in a precarious position, but also not putting our residents in a precarious position. So I just, I'm grateful for that and grateful for your leadership. And yeah, let's get to work. Let's knock this out. And I, that's a hell of a Photoshop, by the way. I got a lot more hair in that photo.
I don't have much to add, so I'll keep it brief. In the work session, we talked a lot about accountability, and I'm very excited about how we can actually deliver on these really exciting goals. I think there's a lot in store for Milwaukee, so.
Well, I want to take just a moment to thank two groups. And the first group is all of our residents who provided us valuable input as we started this. I mean, you know, 240-some response, that's, that's no small sample size. And so I really appreciate that, that they're willing to spend a little time to go out there and tell us what they think. And we use those inputs. We talked about those before we started any sort of discussion or deliberations. And I also want to thank my fellow councilors because we're a group of people who think we know a lot. And we have, you know, we're passionate about certain subjects and that kind of thing. And we, we can't all get exactly what we want. And so I saw a lot of ability to, to compromise, to come up with solutions and goals that, that everyone can get behind. And so I appreciate that very much.
All right. Well, I, yeah, I, I think I said my piece at the beginning, but thank you, everyone. And yeah, let's get to work. And we'll look forward to starting our monthly, our, you know, our, our monthly cycle in, in, in April. So great. Thank you, Emma and everyone.
May I make a motion? I move to approve the resolution adopting council goals for 2025 to 2027.
I gladly second.
It is moved and seconded to approve the resolution adopting city council goals for 2025 through 2027. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say no. None heard? The goals are adopted unanimously. With this, I will invite up Senior Planner Brett Kelver and start the public hearing on adoption of flood control code requirements. The public hearing on the proposed flood control code requirements is called to order. The purpose of this hearing is to hear the staff report, take public comments, deliberate, and consider authorizing the flood control code changes. Before I go further, I just wanted to note, I, I see we have some people in the audience. If you are wanting to make public comment, there's a yellow card and you can, I mean, and you can decide that as we go along. But I just want you to know, there's a yellow card over there on the side if you decide you want to make public comment. Does any council member wish to announce actual or potential conflicts of interest? Seeing none, I'll turn it over to Brett for his staff presentation.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor Beatty, councilors. Happy New Year. My first chance to say that to you all, even though it's February. Brett Kelver, I'm Senior Planner, work with the Planning Department, and I am going to walk us through this, this presentation. We're talking about making some amendments to the city's flood hazard regulations, which are in Title 18 of our municipal code. This is something that the Planning Commission discussed in a public hearing a few weeks ago, January 14th, and made a recommendation to you to adopt, adopt these amendments. So we're going to see what you think about that tonight. We had a conversation with you all back in mid-November, so almost two months, three months ago, almost three months ago, a work session just to kind of line out where we were going with these. So I know you're probably at this point pretty familiar with this, but just for your fresher benefit and for anyone who's, who's watching, I'll just give a really quick overview of what we're talking about. So this map shows kind of a bird's eye view of the city and our areas that are kind of flood-prone here. As you can imagine, they focus on our main waterways, so to the north, Johnson Creek, Kellogg Creek to the south, and the Willamette River on the, the west. And just a real quick rundown of the color coding here, the light blue is what FEMA has designated, sorry, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, who kind of oversees the, the flood hazard rules for the whole country. They've identified what's called a 100-year floodplain, so those areas are shown in light blue. The cross-hatched areas are what is considered the floodway. This is usually an area within the floodplain that is especially dangerous. It's where you can expect in a flood event to actually have kind of a moving channel of water versus maybe just water rising up and kind of ponding or standing. And then we also have access to some data from the 1996 flood event in the metro region. And so that's shown on our maps, and we regulate that area as well. The orange areas on this map are, are what's shown by FEMA as 500-year floodplain, so much less prone to flooding, but, but we show those on our map. We're not currently regulating them. And then, as I mentioned, Title 18 is the home for the rules that we have about, about flood hazards. And the idea is to find a balance, you know, allowing some development in these areas, although we generally want to discourage it if it's not already there, but recognizing the importance of our, the flood, floodplain for, that's where floodwater wants to be and is supposed to go. And so we want to make sure that whatever things people do in those areas, don't do anything to diminish the capacity of the floodplain to store floodwater. And when people are developing or have developed there, we want to, we want to have rules that encourage them to protect what is there. So for example, usually making sure that the lowest floor of their, their dwelling is elevated a certain distance above what's identified as a, as a base flood elevation. And by doing some of that, we're also minimizing the potential for things to move downstream or flow around in a flood event. So kind of the idea is, is just kind of protect everyone here. Having these rules is what makes the city eligible to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program, which is what gives property owners in Milwaukee, and there are about 175 or so who are affected by the floodplain here, the opportunity to buy flood insurance that's federally subsidized, so much more affordable than it would be otherwise. So it's been important over time for us to have these rules and to update them as changes are passed on to us from the federal level. And with that in mind, for the last 15 years or so, there has been a lawsuit or lawsuits working their way through the federal courts related to concerns that the, the flood insurance program itself, the allowances that it made to, for development, was actually having some unintended impacts for certain listed or endangered fish species. And so there's been a process of trying to evaluate and assess how or what kinds of changes to make so that we can ensure that the rules we have to protect property from, from flooding are not inadvertently impacting in a negative way some of these endangered species. And so the focus that is emerging as this process is nearing its end, it's getting close, is there's been identification of three key features or functions that the floodplain provides. One of them is flood storage, which we already largely regulate, that is making sure that we don't we don't reduce the capacity of the floodplain area to store floodwater by letting people build things in it and, and kind of uh, supplant the areas that floodwater would go. But also kind of a new focus on water quality and also riparian vegetation. So these are kind of three new components that, uh, that we're being asked to, to pull into the code. As we discussed with you in November, there were some options presented to uh, Milwaukee and other communities with flood properties. Uh, we discussed with you some, some of those options and um, our recommendation, which was to use a model ordinance that had been provided uh, by FEMA, um, and integrate that into our code. And you gave us the direction to move forward with that and uh, and that's what we've done. And that's, that's why we're here. We're, we're moving as quickly as we, as we can to ticket these rules on the books so that we can remain compliant and stay eligible for the flood insurance program. So, the three floodplain functions and have, each one has had a, a proxy identified. So how are we going to measure this or deal with or regulate this in reality? And so the concept of flood storage, what's been identified as the proxy is undeveloped space, that is space that hasn't been filled, that is available for floodwater to go into. And the idea is if your project is going to uh, reduce some of that existing undeveloped space, you need to mitigate by, well, the, the first idea is to try not to do that, to try to have uh, for all of these things, what's called a no net loss. So let's make sure that we're not losing any of these floodplain functions. And so if you are, if your project is removing some undeveloped space, the idea is that you would mitigate at a two-to-one ratio. For the water quality piece, the proxy that's been identified is making sure that we maintain pervious surface, so allowing water to kind of percolate down into the ground instead of sheet flowing across, you know, taking soil pollutants, that kind of thing. But those kinds of things would affect negatively the, uh, the water quality for those species of concern. And so the idea again is if your project is going to add new impervious surface, you need to make sure you're balancing that with um, an equal amount of pervious surface. And then the final piece, the riparian vegetation, that's been kind of quantified with trees and tree removal, particularly trees, the threshold is six inches diameter or breast height or larger. If you're removing those within the floodplain as part of your project, there are some uh, projected ratios that you need to make, like a three-to-one ratio uh, within a particular zone of concern. And with that, uh, there's a note that a new concept that's being introduced with these rules is called the riparian buffer zone or RBZ. This is an area that is um, within the floodplain. If you measure from the top of bank or the ordinary high watermark, 170 feet onto a property, if, if you're still within the floodplain at that distance, that area is called the, the RBZ, the riparian buffer zone. And that's where it's, it's considered kind of the most important area of focus for mitigation. That's where the, the ratios are going to be highest uh, for that work. There's also a riparian buffer zone fringe, so if we get beyond the 170-foot mark and you're still within the floodplain area, that's the RBZ fringe and that area has a little bit lower mitigation formula. There's a table that I'm, I'm showing here that just kind of shows some of the hierarchy and priority for, for mitigation. You can see the, there are the three columns, well, three primary columns, undeveloped space, the impervious surface, and then three categories of trees. And the idea is here, these are the ratios of mitigation that are presented when you're within that, the riparian buffer zone um, itself. The farther you get away, once you get out into the RBZ fringe area, the numbers go down a little bit. And there's a push to mitigate any impacts that you might have on the site itself. So, you know, there's a set of ratios and the idea is if you have to move beyond the site, there's an acknowledgement that in some cases you just can't fit everything all into one site and do a reasonable development. So the, the push is to at least stay within the same area of the stream or the water body, uh, that's the flood concern. You can see that, that mitigation onsite for mitigation offsite, same reach. You can see the percentages are the same. The idea is it's basically the same formula uh, as the mitigation above. The idea is if you go, have to go farther away offsite, um, you're going to have to do even more mitigation. So there's some acknowledgement that uh, you may not be able to stay onsite with, with your work, but um, that their formulas to account for that. And one additional principle that's been introduced is called the beneficial gain standard and the idea is that kind of acknowledging that there's already been some degradation, I think, within the floodplain. The idea is that your project should um, do a little bit of additional vegetation planting. So it's at this 5% number, whatever their square footage is, you need to do some planting at that, at that degree. So that's, that's the essence of, of the, the new rules here.
I'm sorry, can you talk about that beneficial, that 5%, what, what triggers that or what is?
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't follow how that came in.
So this, this is, I think, in a way, um, I think the name says it, you know, the general principle that we're trying to implement here is no net loss, right? So keeping kind of a balance. And with the name Beneficial Gain Standard, I think that's an acknowledgement that there is a need to make some improvement within the floodplain for these, for these functions. In particular, they've identified um, vegetation, I think, as a, as a target. So I think the idea, the way, an example this might come in is if, let's say, you have a, your, whatever is defined as your project area is 100 square feet, let's say. The idea is that 5% of that or five square feet, which is not a lot, but five square feet would be an area that you need to, to, to plant if, uh, if it's not already, so.
Over and above the things in the chart.
In addition to whatever other mitigation you're doing. So it, so yes, it's kind of on top of this, the no net loss principles.
So you could like not be removing any trees, but because you're building something in the floodplain, you would still need to do this 5%?
Right, I think, I think that the tree removal piece seems like the less, um, the least relevant because you're, you are kind of, one, you're already planting something and two, how you would measure the square footage of a project area for tree removal, it seems like it would be fairly insignificant unless you're really removing a lot of, a lot of trees. It probably would come in more if you're adding impervious surface and you are, you know, you're putting a new driveway in. And even if you make it pervious, I think the idea is you would still take a percentage of that area that you've affected, um, even with the no net loss principle and find some place to plant on the site. So it's, so it's a little bit of on top of everything else.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thanks for the question. I think the mayor had asked if we might uh, try to give a little bit of an illustration by zooming in a little bit more. I mean, we, I showed you this large scale, uh, bird's eye view of the whole city and I wanted to present a, a graphic that shows hopefully an example of some of these areas that we've been talking about. And I have, okay, I have control of the mouse here, so I'll try to show. This is an area in Island Station, this is 19th Avenue, actually near the Elk Rock Estates Development, so close to the entrance to Spring Park. And the light blue area is the 100-year floodplain. And so you can see here, this is a, if you can follow my cursor, this area here is kind of that slough area that separates Spring Park from the, these residential properties. And so you can see the 100-year floodplain extends fairly well up the slope, almost to the street itself. So most of these properties are within the 100-year floodplain. And the, I've thrown some elevation lines on here as well, that's what, that's what the smaller squiggly lines are, just to give a sense of how the grade is changing. Then you can see the crosshatch area here, this is the floodway, this is that area where you, again, you would expect in a flood event, water would probably actually be moving. It's a little more dangerous and that's where we, if people are proposing to do things in the floodway, it, things are really limited, you have, you have to do a lot more analysis. And it's a little bit harder to see, especially with some of these, um, the elevation lines on, but there's a little bit, you can see faintly where the, I think where the, trying to show. I think, for example, you can see where it's really light blue, that's just 100-year floodplain. You can see on this property, for example, it gets a little bit darker. This is what is being represented as the 1996 flood area. So you can see this a little better if you're just looking at the map simply, but there is some overlap of these areas of the 100-year floodplain and what was actually flooded in 1996. But that's what's, that's what's being represented here. And then again, I'm showing, I'm showing the elevation lines. And, and what I wanted to do is just to illustrate this RBZ, the riparian buffer zone issue, um, I took just an approximate measurement. If, if we assume that somewhere around here, the start of this arrow is maybe the top of bank or the ordinary high watermark, I measured roughly 170 feet. And so this, to the, to the end of the orange area here would be this area of highest focus for mitigation work. So if you're doing a project in, in there, that's where the, the mitigation numbers are highest. On, on several of these properties here, you can see the 170-foot mark stops before you get out of the floodplain. So this remaining area that's within the floodplain is the RBZ fringe and that's where the mitigation requirements start to go down a little bit because you're getting farther from the water body. It, it also works, not exactly in reverse, but the idea is it's not just 170 feet onto your property, it's, you have to also be within the floodplain. So if you go a little farther north up the street here, for example, and if, if we're measuring 170 feet on this property, I think we probably get to 170 feet like out here beyond the floodplain. The area outside the floodplain is no longer in the RBZ and there's no RBZ fringe as well. So if that makes sense, the, this RBZ concept is all about if you're in the floodplain. So people may think, well, gosh, 170 feet under my property, it's, it's all about, do you have that much floodplain on your property? So um, there are sites that have a very small, you know, very narrow width of floodplain and the idea is the RBZ zone is just going to be within that, maybe it's only 50 feet wide. So even though I can measure, you've got a really deep property, I can go 170 feet onto your property, but 120 feet of it is not in the floodplain. The regulation kind of stops, all this just applies within the floodplain, if that makes sense. Does this help illustrate a little bit of some of these concepts that are, that I had on before and that are discussed in the staff report? Okay, okay. Well, with that, I think the idea, I'm just shifting gears now into our, the standard um, approval criteria for, for code amendments like this. And we've addressed those in the findings that were presented uh, with the staff report and um, wanted to just present you with the options as per your discussion. If you um, want to um, adopt the proposed adoption of the findings as they're presented, that's an option. If you threw some discussion, think we need to make some changes to the findings, that's another one. And also, this is a legislative process, so there's no land use time clock clicking. So while we'd rather get this done and taken care of, uh, there's no 120-day clock. So if you felt the need, if you, there was some strong opinion about this in the discussion and you needed to continue the hearing and have us bring back more information, that's an option as well. So with that, I'll ask if you have any questions about what was in the report, what I've talked about tonight, or, or anything else you might have run across.
Any questions? No?
Nope, um, I appreciate you reviewing the stuff that we heard in the work session before. Thank you.
Um, okay, if no questions, I do appreciate that map, that helped me visualize for sure.
That was a great suggestion. Thank you for that.
Um, all right, well, if no questions, oh, Mike, uh, did we receive any correspondence on the topic?
No. We, we did hold a public meeting um, in December. The Weedmans were among some of the people who were there, the mayor dropped in for a little bit, so we, we got some information out there, but we have not received any formal correspondence.
And were people whose, you said there's 175 properties?
Yes.
So they, those property owners were all noticed?
They all received the, that measure 56 notice that we required to send, yeah.
Okay, okay. Does anyone wish to comment on these proposed flood? Um, if, if you want to come up and come up to the microphone, hit the little red, uh, hit the little thing so the red light comes on, state your name and address. Actually, I have a script, so I'll, I'll read you my script. Uh, the council will now take public testimony on the proposed code changes. I will recognize speakers and any questions should be addressed through me. When you begin to speak, state your name and city of residence for the record. For those in person who wish to speak, please submit a yellow comment card, you can do that after the fact. If you are on Zoom, do we have any people on Zoom? I won't bother to read that then. Okay, um, we'll give you three minutes to present your questions and comments. Yep.
Uh, Ms. Lisa Beatty, is that it? Mayor, thank you. Uh, just a question I have, my name's Roy Weedman. I have property uh, on Lake Road, off Lake Road, but I actually, my physical address is out in Damascus right now. And so, but uh, we're going to do future development there, in the sense that we're doing a partition and that's why we've been working with Brent for, what, three years or something? And it's almost done, so I just have some questions for the buyers, we're, we're going to put it up for sale, let contractors do whatever they want, but when they ask us questions, I wanted to give them some answers to it. And the question I have is where do we get this map with the floodplain, is it through you?
I, I don't control it, I mean, but I could, I could certainly help you get access to it. FEMA has a website that will allow you to put in your address and it'll take you to a view of, of the flood map. We also have access to it on our city maps and I can either meet with you or I can email to you, but yeah, I can, I can show you the, the floodplain extent.
And I know you're probably pretty familiar with our property, so from Kellogg Creek, how far are you, so you're going 170 feet from the creek, is that what you're saying?
Right, the 170 feet would be the, what's defined as that riparian buffer zone area. I think along Kellogg Creek and as I'm thinking about what I remember about your property in particular, I don't think the floodplain extends 170 feet onto your property. I think it's much more narrow just because of the change in, in elevation there.
And then we have several trees on there, so the ones that die and we, we remove or they want to remove, do they have to come down and get a permit? How does that handle? Some of them trees are like about 100 feet tall.
It does depend on where they are with respect to these rules. If they're, if we're talking about trees that are within that floodplain area, um, I think there's a list of some exemptions, um, but I think just to be conservative, I would say, and there are probably a couple layers here, but for the flood piece of it, I think if I understand what we're, what we're putting forward here, if you're wanting to remove trees within the floodplain, there would be a requirement to replace them at a certain ratio. And then you would also, again, depending on where they are, there might, if they're within a natural resource area, there's some rules about that. And then since we're talking about a residential property, we also have our residential tree code that, that would probably have uh, maybe a permit process as well.
We can get the information through you.
Sure.
Okay. And then lastly, because I know the people that are, are interested in buying the property, on the other side of the creek, they have lawns groomed all the way down to the creek. Ours is blackberries and shr- you know, just dense vegetation. What restrictions are they have to take out the blackberries and put lawn in there?
Yeah, so I think.
Falls my three minutes up?
And I guess I feel like your comments aren't really about whether we should approve or not this package and that's really our duty tonight. So it sounds like you have things to discuss with staff.
I'd be happy to talk to you afterward, yeah.
Okay, sure. Okay, um, yeah, other than that, I, if you approve it or not, I, I, it's, I, we're, we're just trying to find out what we pass on to the prospective buyers.
Sure, sure, and I applaud you for being.
But if I put in a little thing, don't get mad at me when I leave. Uh, I, I walked in late and apparently you're doing something about the future of the development for downtown Milwaukee. Whatever you can come up with, do something. If you take Gresham, Sellwood, Alberta, Killingsworth and, and uh, all them, you know, where they revitalize and I call it like Little Yuppieville, you know, they. Milwaukee, you're driving up here, it's dead. I was raised here.
Yeah.
I went to high school here, grade school here, and it's dead.
Well, come back this summer because we'll have a new brewery and uh, some new food cart pods and come for our farmer's market if you haven't been for that.
And just a suggestion, I did, just to throw something out, I, I played a lot of sports and traveled all over Oregon with softball teams and stuff. Put on a local tournaments and stuff, you, you bring in hundreds, if not thousands of people to, you know, restaurants, gas stations, you know, whatever. I did that for 20 years and we traveled all over. And when we go into a town, it was a big event. Anyway, so, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Do I push the button again?
Just to turn it off, yeah, yeah, thank you. Yeah, if you could fill out that yellow card and give it to the recorder so we have it for our record, that would be great. Thank you. All right, um, we don't have anyone else who is wanting to testify. Um, okay, uh, does staff have any response to the testimony? It seems like those were all.
No, I'm happy to talk to the Weedmans after, after this.
Okay, does council have any questions for staff? All right. Yeah, okay.
So, um, the, the 100-year floodplain, when was that last established, do you know?
I don't know exactly. I think, you know, we've done a couple of updates in the time that I've been here. I think there was, I feel like there was one in 2008 maybe that in, involved introducing some new maps, but I don't think the maps have been.
But that's FEMA.
Yes. Right, they're providing that, right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, they do it on a cycle. Yeah, they do it on a cycle. You know, I don't know how frequent it is, but I do remember it happened in the late 2000s where like all the people got noticed and there was a big discussion about.
I'm sorry, one more question. So the 170 properties, you said that those were in the floodplain. You don't have to be in the floodplain to get FEMA flood insurance.
Are you asking me or telling me?
I think I'm telling you.
I I'm not that familiar with how the program works. And I guess if if someone, you know, wanted to buy that insurance just as a protection, even if maybe they they're close to the creek, but they don't have the floodplain doesn't show coming up very far on their property or close to their house, I imagine they could. I don't know how that would work or what they would pay, but.
I, yeah, I say that I might be close to the 500 year, but maybe certainly not the 100 year. So I'll research that with myself because I'm not sure that you have to be within the floodplain to get the insurance. And so I was trying to trying to figure out if it was really just 170 people in the floodplain, or is it 170 people in its entirety? So.
Well, I think the number of properties that are touched by the floodplain is about 175 in the city by the 100-year floodplain, I think.
But if we don't, if we don't remain National Flood Insurance eligible, they won't be able to get that. And that's a big hardship for people. Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Mayor, I had a question.
Oh, sorry.
I just I had a question around the insurance. So for the folks that are within this area, if we don't approve the package, then they won't be able to get flood insurance, right?
Yes, I think that I'm not sure that it's anything that happens immediately because we're technically in the program. We're eligible for the program now. And if but if we didn't do this, I think FEMA would take steps to push us out. We would lose our eligibility to be in the program. And then, yeah, I think people would be on their own to to find flood insurance from, you know, from whatever companies they could without the federal subsidy.
It becomes really cost prohibitive at that point to try and find flood insurance out in the outside market. And I'm wondering about for existing residents, if we didn't pass this and they needed to make an addition to their house or pull permitting and in that regard, I think that they still have to show current insurance for flood purposes or at least at least up to the floodline. So I guess I'm trying to, I think the point that I'm trying to make is that this is really important for us to to move forward with because it does impact the, you know, the ability of all of those residents to have the insurance that they need and be able to sell their house or be able to buy a house in this area. So, yeah, I guess I was also telling you.
That's what I felt like, and I agree, I agree.
I will just throw in that I attended a few, couple of different sessions on this over at the League of Oregon Cities and at the Oregon Mayors Association. And yes, I think eventually communities in Oregon could lose their flood insurance. My I was told there will not be any actions like that before summer at the earliest and probably not until later in 2025. But it is a potential down the line for sure. Yeah. Sure. Other questions? All right. If they will, if there are no more questions, I'll entertain a motion to close the public comment part of the hearing.
I move to close the public comment part of the flood control code changes hearing.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public comment part of the flood control code changes hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. None heard. The public comment part of the hearing is closed. Is there any council discussion? Okay, is council ready to vote? I would entertain a motion.
I have one for you. I move for the first and second readings by title only and the adoption of the ordinance amending municipal code MMC Title 18 Flood Hazard Regulations to comply with new federal requirements, file ZA-2024-003, and declaring an emergency.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded for the first and second readings by title only and adoption of the ordinance amending municipal code Title 18 Flood Hazard Regulations to comply with new federal requirements, file number ZA-2024-003, and declaring an emergency. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no. None heard. It passes unanimously. Ms. Sager, would you please read the ordinance two times by title only?
Certainly. An ordinance of the City of Milwaukee, Oregon, amending municipal code Title 18 Flood Hazard Regulations to comply with new federal requirements, file number ZA-2024-003, and declaring an emergency. And again, an ordinance of the City of Milwaukee, Oregon, amending municipal code Title 18 Flood Hazard Regulations to comply with new federal requirements, file number ZA-2024-003, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Stauffer, would you please poll the council?
Counselor Costerbody?
Aye.
Counselor Massey?
Aye.
Counsel President Anderson?
Aye.
Counsel Stavendord?
Aye.
Mayor Beatty?
Aye.
Motion carried five to zero, ordinance 2248.
All right. So I think that's it.
Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you. And Brett can come out now and answer the rest of your questions. And with that, we will move on to legislative priorities and lobbying. The first part of our council reports block, which is legislative priorities and lobbying. And our recorder is going to present that. I will just say we kind of talked, we kind of had a few bits about this in our work session. I did send around and I will continue to send around the what I received from the Metro Mayor's Consortium about bills that are coming up on hearings and stuff. But I am hoping we kind of all all take apart in tracking bills and stepping forward when we think there's something that warrants a letter to the legislature. So that I'll turn it over to Mr. Stauffer.
Thank you, Mayor Beatty. Good evening, council. And I'll just start off by saying this is the slide deck that I've been updating for the last few sessions. I'm open to changing everything here. This is sort of, I pay attention to what I hear about which bills councils tracking and staff are tracking, and then I try to provide a quick snapshot. And as we all know, in the hot and heavy of a session sometimes, my slide from this morning is outdated by the time we're here in the evening. So this is basically statuses of the bills that I've seen from council and staff so far this session. So first of all, key dates, just a reminder where we are. Session began January 21st. We are a couple of weeks before the first real deadline for measure introductions. And of course, there's a little more detail of a calendar on the state legislature's list website. So a couple pages of bills that I heard tracked and snapshots, and I'll announce them, and then feel free to chime in or remark on it. So I kind of this year, I'm trying to do it by subject topic and to be a little bit purposeful. And otherwise, if you do it by bill number, you end up being all over the place, and it's just very chaotic, which it might happen anyway. Anyway, there was a tranche, a couple of bills relating to building, I thought was sort of the broad topic. HB 2081, One Stop Shop 2.0, I've heard it called. Nothing scheduled for that. And Senate Bill 88, Get the Junk Out of Rates, Energy Rates, nothing scheduled there. So maybe I didn't know if you wanted anything else on these ones.
I don't have any updates on those, although I did see an email come across from the Oregon CUB today. So maybe there's something coming. But I would probably couch those as energy affordability, actually. And so they do have an access to our to our new goals.
Energy affordability.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. And those last measure five and 51s, I submitted a letter last week on my own behalf. Metro Mayor's Consortium also had testimony and letters. And LOC had some other cities, some other cities submitted letters. And the Eugene city manager, I believe it was, testified. It's asking the legislature to establish a group of task forces. And I guess they do have in mind four separate task forces as opposed to one on all those kind of to study over the next year or more. I mean, it's not going to lead to legislation this term. But if they establish the task forces to study measures five and 50 and what they, you know, how they impact cities, as we all know, they do. So we'll see if they establish those task forces or not. I don't know if the council president has any insight on that.
I mean, a lot of this will be up to how Chair Nathanson is going to conduct some future revenue work. And I think that that remains to be seen. There's a lot of discussion about how House Democrats want to use the new super majority they've got. So we'll see a little bit more what her plans are. But she's not shared what exactly she's going to be doing going forward.
Okay. It was a Representative Evans from Springfield. Is that where he's from?
From South Salem and Independence.
Oh, that's right, that's right, who introduced these bills. And he gave some really good testimony, I thought, at this hearing. So I hope they, go ahead.
The only other bill on here that I'm tracking through my recorder associations is SB 580 that is proposing to require election filings be posted online pretty quickly. It's sort of a minor logistical thing that would alter our practices here in Milwaukee, although it's up in like a high contentious one. So we'll see where that goes. And while I have the floor, I'll just say that through the League of Oregon Cities, our Association of Municipal Recorders, and the Public Records Advisory Council that I sit on for the state, there are a few records related things that we're looking, watching today. There was a hearing on HB 2533 that would extend retention periods for certain records. I haven't had much time to dive into that, but that just is one that I'm tracking. Early on, I learned about House Joint Resolution 2, which would be a constitutional amendment and addressing unfunded mandates for local governments, including public records and meeting fees. And I get the sense that that might be from the legislator in the eastern part of the state, and they're hearing from a number of smaller communities who are concerned about for this particular public record meetings, the increase in those. And then there are some legislative concepts that might not go anywhere. One, interestingly, would potentially pull back some of the authority regarding public meeting law enforcement at the Government Ethics Commission again. We're all still sort of dealing with that. And council will have a chance to hear from the OGC at a training in March. So and then Counselor Costerbody had a veterans-related bill, HB 2537, regarding low-income medical voucher program for veterans. And it looked like that had a hearing in January 17th.
And then Counselor Anderson put in the packet some housing-related bills from Dev Northwest. I don't know if you think we ought to be adding all of those to this. Did you have some? Oh, you've got them. Oh, I'm sorry.
That was going to be one of my questions, actually, because I did get that. I saw those bills called out, and I can add those to the list if that's helpful or kind of want to ask that same question, so.
Yep, yeah, I think that sounds great. And I will say right now for you, Scott, House Bill 3503 is Rep. Dobson's scattered sites bill. It just was first read today.
3503, I'll add that one. And you and so the ones that are called out in the Dev Northwest stuff, you'd like those added too?
Yep, yeah.
Yeah, so that means there's a bill number now for the one that's an LC in this Dev Northwest.
Is that the one you just referenced?
Yeah. Okay.
Very good. So I didn't have any other bills. So if you have bills that you'd like to add now, let me know numbers. Email me, I can add them to the tracker as we go. And we all, you know, things will change, and I will track them. Counselor, Counsel President Anderson submitted the Dev Northwest things and Housing Needs Analysis from the state. Didn't know if you wanted to.
The one other that I got is the Governor's Housing Bill. I think it's 3168, but I'd have to track. I might be giving you a fake number.
2168 or?
No, I think it would be a two.
Yeah.
Two? Yep. But I can get you the actual number, but I think that that one might be a good one for.
2138?
That's it. Yep.
2138.
A mix of numbers, not all quite right.
2138, I'll run with that until, tell me something else.
Is there a new version of that, an amendment?
Not one that I know of.
Okay, okay.
And then Mayor Beatty submitted materials related to 5 and 50. And I think you spoke about that.
5 and 50? Yeah, I think, you know, that's probably going to sit a while, it sounds like, from what from what the council president said. And the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis might be a thing for council reports discussion, but it's not really a legislation thing, correct?
That might be helpful as you're submitting materials. And it may be confused, they may be both at certain times. But if it's more of a report versus legislative, then that'd help me. You can help me clarify where I'm going with them. Other than that, in terms of council and regional legislative act issues, the other thing I came, saw come across the desk this week was a proposal to write a letter in support of Karen Powers' appointment to the Public Utilities Commission. So I often will have a word version that I can present. And if council wants to wordsmith it a little bit on the dais, that's fine. I don't, I got an email with something in it of a text, but I didn't have a word version. So I don't have something to bring up now for you, but there was that proposal.
Oh, okay, I thought we were going to have it. Okay.
This might be a you question. Is there a way that we could share text right now? If I emailed it to everyone right now, and then we put it in the packet afterwards?
Essentially, what was in the email?
It hasn't changed since his email yesterday.
Talk amongst yourselves.
Okay, well, yeah, I will. We've got things to talk about before that. I wanted to ask the council president from his, you know, insider experience in Salem to talk a little bit about, you know, we get, there's a first hearing on something, and they don't typically discuss it. They just take testimony.
Yeah.
And then they just go on to the next thing. Then if they're going to consider it, they schedule it for a work session or something. So how important is it to get in on that? If you if you think it's something we want to comment on, to get in on that first hearing? Or are we kind of spinning our wheels and writing too many letters because a lot of those things won't live, won't go on to have a life? Yeah, any advice on that?
I would say.
On what point to chime in?
Yeah, if folks are working a bill doing that second work session, it's because they've got the votes to move the bill. And so at that point, it's a little too late to weigh in because they're not going to put it up for a hearing unless they know that it's going to move forward. The chairs and vice chairs will make sure they have all their ducks in row ahead of time. And so I would say that first hearing, often chairs will do as a way to daylight a concept and see, is there anyone who actually is opposed to this? And so that is a really great time for us to engage that first hearing.
So we do need to get on early.
Yep.
Okay, okay, that's good to know.
The good thing is there are two chambers, so we can always. The second chamber.
True. Okay, folks, if you guys can read this, it's a letter, I mean, I can read it out loud if you want me to. But it's a, it's just a letter in support of former city councillor Karen Powers' appointment to the PUC. I did a first draft, and Will fleshed it out with more info, especially on the part about her legislative accomplishments. And so I will. Yeah, I just wanted to see if everyone was on board for signing this. I had asked to set it up for all five signatures. She is, I don't know if there's a hearing yet on this, but the position they are pointing her to, the person turns out of that position on March 31st. So it's probably coming up in the next, you know, next few weeks. So I'd like to get this forward now rather than wait two weeks in case it's too late, right?
Yeah, and this might be for tracking this. If you look at the Senate Rules agendas, they'll publish any appointments they're considering. And so if you're able to submit it on our behalf, if we approve it today, whenever they post a work session about those appointments, that would be really, really helpful. And I'll try and keep an eye out for when that comes to.
Happy to submit on behalf of the body.
Anybody have any concerns about this letter? Or are you happy to sign on?
Happy to sign on.
Yeah, okay, great. Great.
One question. Does she maintain her current position with this appointment?
I doubt it. I don't know the answer to that, but I seriously doubt it.
She said she'd be stepping down.
Okay.
But she'll get a salary as a part of the PUC.
Okay.
Okay. Before we move on to regular council reports, any other legislative stuff?
Mayor, I was just wondering... Oh, I'm sorry. Did I just slide tackle your comment? Okay.
He, no, he was...
All right. I was wondering on the, on the reporting of these, if you can go back to the bill listing that you had, yeah, like on that, would it be possible to put like a star and asterisk on the, on the legislation that we have submitted or that, or that one of us has submitted commentary on? So we can just flag that, you know?
That's a good idea.
Either tracking or also a good opportunity. Like if the mayor has submitted a letter in support of something and we might also want to do that, then I just, I feel like that's another important thing that I tracked during the session.
Well, and if, I mean, I probably would be a good, I like that, and it probably would be a good practice to share those letters. So I guess I can start sending, like I can send that one to Scott to put in the, I mean, Scott helped me make it all nice and ready to submit. So I think he has it, but I can send it and put it in the record so that everybody knows. Yeah. Yep.
Yep. That wouldn't be a problem. And so to that point, today, it's only the one that you did for M50 and 5, 5 and 50, right? That's it today?
That's the only one I've done. And then this one for Rep Power. Yeah.
Great. And then before we transition to other ones, I just wanted to, since this is the first time through the whole slide deck, we won't need to do this every single time, but I just want to call attention and be transparent about where I generally get my sources of information. Theolists, of course, is the gospel. In the past, and I looked at it today, and it didn't seem to be too populated by LOC's CM3 website. The login still works, that thing that they share to everybody, but there wasn't much there. And then the Thorn Run Partners, the mayor shares. And then frankly, we have some folks in the building, as they say, in Salem. And so obviously, you all are a source of information about this as well. So I just wanted to be, I'm the collector and the sharer, but I'm, you know, pulling from sources. And so if any updates to this, let me know. But then that's the legislative update for tonight.
Well, and I will call out, I had it to raise in, later, in council reports anyway, but Friday's at noon, LOC does a Zoom call on what's going on, what's expected to go on next, the next week. I haven't yet tuned in this session, but I have done it in sessions past. It's a, it's an easy Zoom call because nobody's on camera. Everybody's just listening. You can do it from your phone. You can do it while you're doing other things. But it's a one hour, they keep it to one hour. They get like 300 people on there sometimes. I mean, they get quite a few people calling in. But it's a good way to keep on top of, you know, kind of what's moving in terms of what LOC is tracking. So I do recommend that. And it looked like the council president had something he wanted to say.
Maybe we can call this a transition to reports, because this was the C4 letter, which is a little bit of both. C4 has that same legislative letter that Counselor Stavendor showed us before. They said, if elections have changed anything, reach out to your councils and see if there's any updating you all want. I assume that we want to keep the letter as is.
Does everybody remember that? That was the, the letter that was, it was the county's legislative priorities that came out of the C4 retreat last summer. And Counselor Stavendor brought it, and we, it was a very kind of general, high-level document, one pager.
Yeah.
So I'm fine.
I'm good.
Sticking with it.
All right. Easy enough. If that's one you need, want me to format, could someone resend it to me?
I think it's the same.
The county formats it, they just want our logo, and they already got it.
Yeah. Great.
Yeah. Great. Thank you. All right. Other council reports?
Yeah. Well, I have the wrong notebook, but I do remember what was said, North Clackamas Chamber met today. And they had actually a list of bills that they were keeping an eye out. One of them was the striking employees can collect unemployment. The other one was, I think, 31, is it 3119, the one with the diesel trucks? Is it 3118?
I don't know the bill number, but yeah.
Diesel trucks. There was a few others. And again, I have the wrong notebook. But we just kind of went over some of those bills and what they were. But, you know, one thing that I gathered from that meeting is that there's a, there's some tension between the business community and government right now. It's at least in Clackamas County. There's this, there's a consensus that one side of the aisle is anti-business. So I think it's causing some issues amongst the business community. They do have some legitimate concerns. I did mention to Jay Jones, who's the CEO of the Chamber, that we did select economic development as one of our goals. So he and I will be, hopefully soon, getting together because there's some things that he wanted to talk about with that and how the Chamber can, can help with it. But yeah, it was just an hour long. I'll get those bills from the other notebook next time. But as I said, you know, the more we can do, and I know economic development's our thing, but I think there's a real need to reach out to the business community individually and just kind of reaffirm our commitment for them because there's some tension there.
That's an interesting point, because I mean, yeah, we do want to support our business community. On the other hand, the Chamber in particular takes a lot of bad climate positions. They are very friendly to Northwest Natural. They always are taking up Northwest Natural's position. This, this trucking bill, 3119, they want to delay the implementation of requiring cleaner, cleaner diesel trucks. And it's only about new trucks. It's not about people with, you know, people's existing equipments. It's just about the sale of new trucks. So I'm not sure I agree with their position on this.
Yeah, I'm not saying about their position. I'm saying more about, because I don't know if I do either, I'm just saying more about the tension between the business community and one political party.
Yeah.
Right? And that's kind of, that's the issue. It's not about the specific bills, but behind every small business is a family, so.
Well, I would love to engage with them to, I mean, I was at a meeting with Jay last week, and I think I have a pretty good relationship with him, but I would love to engage with them on some climate, more climate-friendly positions. So if you want to have a conver, I'd be happy to go in and have a conversation about that.
He mentioned, actually, he mentioned Milwaukee and talked about how for years the relationship wasn't there and how recently he's, even though he might have disagreed with you on a position, the fact that there's still a relationship and you can still, you can still work things out, he made that a very clear point. So that's why I wanted to point to him that we're working on economic development. But yeah, overall, it's not so much the Chamber as a whole. I'm just looking at just the business community and just the small business owners. I'm not, I'm not as like looking at their specific positions on things because we don't always agree on that either.
Yeah. Yeah. Other things to report from? Oh, you don't have the notebook, but anything else that you...
No. And then tomorrow, we have our cab meeting, so I'll be back with another one next week.
Okay. Counselor Stavendor?
Yeah, I just wanted to add around the scattered sites. We have a Housing Advisory Board meeting tomorrow, and so hopefully we'll get an update on the county's plans around the scattered affordable housing sites that they have across the entire county. The last time I heard, there was a plan within incorporated areas, within incorporated jurisdictions, for those sites, hopefully to transition into a land banking opportunity. And then outside of city incorporation, so in urban unincorporated areas of the county, those sites, I thought they were moving toward an effort for recovery housing. So hopefully, we'll get an update about that tomorrow. But I just wanted to flag that for folks because, you know, as I think, I think the mayor brought this up as the legislative concept. And then Council President Anderson, you had mentioned the actual bill number for Representative Dobson's bill around scattered sites. So if those of you are following that bill and its process, and, and, you know, hopefully at our next regular session, then we'll have a council report update around scattered sites. So if you're thinking, if you're, if you're watching or listening in and you are interested in this topic and you want to read through that legislation and are thinking about putting a letter forward, send, send me an email and I can give you an update on things when we get our update from the Housing Advisory Board tomorrow. Because the legislative session goes really fast. And then if you're tuning in and you're just kind of moderately interested in what the plan is for the disposition of those properties, then we'll have an update at our next regular session in two weeks.
Okay. I did notice, I did look at the study session agenda for next week, and it does actually have a council report slot, so you can bring it next week.
Great.
And, and I think that's good, at least in session, to maybe keep those on there because we do need to be able to jump in.
Yeah, things move really quickly.
They do.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. You're caught up? Council President?
The one last thing that I'll add, seeing that we're running over is the Governor's first Housing Production Analysis or Housing Needs Analysis was published. It's got some good information on Milwaukee. Think of this as like, what is our baseline to maintain the affordability that we have today? What do we need to build? If we want to get past that or more affordable, we need to do more than that. And it's some helpful buckets by housing brackets and different AMIs. So.
It is a really interesting read. I definitely, the council president had it put in our packet. I had actually read it last week before our retreat. I'm not, I wouldn't say I've read every word of it. It's 100-plus pages, but I read significant parts of it. And they grouped us, they grouped cities in groups. And it was interesting, like our group had like McMinnville, and it had like a city in southern Oregon. And I need to read more about their methodology, about how they selected the groups and about how they, I need to read and understand their methodology more. But I really think it's a great document because it, it sets a common expectation for everybody. And it sets an expectation for unincorporated urbanized areas as well, which has not really existed before now. I will say, the note, the cover note that Counselor, the Council President put in the, in the packet says that the county has to produce 10,000 units in our UGMA. That's not in our UGMA. It is the whole unincorporated county. So our UGMA is maybe 20% of that. It's all the way to, you know, Gladstone, all the way out to Happy Valley, all the way over to the, you know, and there's also unincorporated around the other cities too, although not a big swath like we have here. So, so that number doesn't just apply to our UGMA. But it's great to see the county have to produce some housing.
Mayor, is that unincorporated urban pockets? Or is it just, or is it unincorporated in, in its totality?
No, I think it's unincorporated inside the urban growth boundary.
Inside the UG, okay. Got it. Thank you.
Yep. And, okay. I'm sorry. Did I cut you off? Nope. Okay. I do have a few more things. I did mention, so there are three calls. LOC has a noon legislative call every Friday. This Friday, they have three calls. In the morning, from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m., they have a call with Wyden and Merkley staffers on putting in for what they call community-initiated projects, which is what we used to call earmarks. They are, those offices are running their earmark thing early. I think the sort of state of chaos in Washington, D.C. has them deciding to shift all that early. They are running that early, and they are trying to get all those, those requests, that their portal for making requests will be open until, I think it's September 20, I mean, September, February 25th, something like that. So there's a, there's a webinar on Friday morning about that. If there's anything we think we might want to seek an earmark for, of course, who knows if earmarks are really going to happen? That's all, of course, in state of flux. But I think their offices trying to be, offices are trying to be proactive about getting ahead and having a package. Then at noon, the legislative call. And then from 1:00 to 4:00, there's a long webinar about revenue streams and about the work that LOC did on revenue, you know, all the, all the surveys and focus groups and stuff and what they learned from that work. And then their revenue toolkit that they developed for cities. So they're doing a three-hour webinar with some of the contractors who did that work. That will be available after the fact for watching. But if you want to ask questions, you got to do it this Friday. Okay. And also on the topic of LOC, I just wanted to bring up, and it's nothing we have to decide tonight, but every year, the LOC conference has these awards at their, at the dinner. There's a big dinner, and there's awards to cities for doing some kind of innovative, great thing. And every time I go, I'm like, hmm, we got better projects than that. We should have put in for an award. So this year, they're actually doing the awards at their mid-year conference in, and so they've, they're taking the nominations now. So the nominations are being accepted till April 4th. But I don't know, I was listening to talk about SAFE today and thinking, oh, we should put in our SAFE at SSMP, you know? I mean, just, I just want people to think about anything that, there are two categories. Excellence, awards of excellence, which are for excellence, innovation, creative efficiencies. And then a second award about good governance, which is more about, more a focus on outreach and community engagement. So I just want to put that out there for people to think about if there are, if there are things you think we should nominate, please talk to Emma, and I will do the same. And then, da-da-da-da. Okay. And then the other thing is the Sunrise Corridor. I have talked to the council president about this, but I don't think we've talked about it on the dais, have we? So the Sunrise Corridor is the county's, what the county is trying to queue up as their big ask on transportation. They've been having a bunch of, they've had, you know, some open houses and public meetings. They actually have some online stuff for comment that closes tomorrow. I would, but there, there will be ongoing conversation in the county and at C4 tables, I think especially. I personally don't think this should be the county's priority because it is prioritizing rural, unincorporated lands that are not in a city. It is benefiting one particular landowner out along Highway 212. There are little, there are pieces of it that I think are kind of cool, but as a huge multimillion-dollar packet, I have my concerns about it. And so I'm going to submit my own comments, but I do encourage everybody before our April 18th meeting to kind of go online and have a look. It is clackamas.us/sunrise, and you can find all kinds of background documents. I, I think there's some concern among, and I don't, I don't think I'm the only mayor in the county who has some of these concerns, I will say. So do you have any light to shed for us on Sunrise?
The one thing I'll say is, this isn't the county's first priority. It's the county's second. The first priority asked that they have to make is 205 widening. So they'll have to fight for those funds first. And I don't know how many other funds we're going to get. Yeah. That was the letter we sent to C4.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. We sent, you mean, C4 sent to the legislature or something?
Or that we signed on to, on behalf of C4. That's why I didn't want to sign the letter. That was my gripe.
Ah. Oh, okay.
It has even less green infrastructure than the Sunrise Corridor, some might say.
Yeah. Okay. With that, I got through my list. Anything else for the good of the order? All right. Well, if not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
One last motion for you this evening? I move to adjourn.
I'll second.
So we moved to second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None heard? We are adjourned. You too. Do you want this? Can use it for staff? Well, I don't know. You need to post it somewhere for.